Moving the motion to approve the agenda. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the agenda. And moving the property second, we approve the agenda all in favor. Motion carried. Moving the motion to approve the minutes. July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Chair, I make the motion to approve the minutes for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you. The move and property second, all in favor. Motion carried. Good news. Public school, public education. It is not just a lot of minds.
On the smile, we'll get you a clicker. You can click to your presentation. You got my friend. You can present right from the podium, yes ma'am. You're very welcome.
I was a part of natural science and we were the largest discipline out of all of them. We had over sixty students. And then one of the first classes was a shark dissect. We got plastic, the dogfish. And ours was, and each of them were about twenty years old. And our names, our names was Chung or Reen. And this is more of it. And then you can see, my group was, I did not start the paper, but they were watching all the paper for the directions. And in the bottom, you can see why it called Chung is running. And then, and also in marine science, we also look under microscope at coral samples. It's like little needles that are found inside of corals. And they were leached and we got to look at them. And in the neuroscience, we talked about things with your brain. Like why, how you have boosters during. Can you, and you suppress those sorts of things. We also did a nap analysis where we actually had to lay on the floor. And teacher would tell us like breathing exercises. And then we start kind of really slow, from back and forth. And then. After that, he's like, okay, I started thinking, you can wake up. And then we all woke up, it was like a five minute thing. Before the end of class, we go, it's a little bit, and you realize we were all kind of tired. And we also got to do an iodine experiment to see whether you have iodine deficiency, which is dealing with your thyroid. So the faster it absorbs, the more you have an iodine deficiency. And it absorbs faster if you live near the coast. And next was the cadaver lab. And then for, for the respect of the cadavers, we weren't allowed to take pictures. But I can tell you about it. There are six stations that showed you a different muscle or organ. And I got to see the nations which are located in the back of your legs, in the back of your thighs. We got to see a heart. We got to see two hearts and healthy lungs. And we also got to see a whole brain and all its veins and the halves. And small, large intestine, long colon, a socket for appendix. And they showed you where the food went after you ate it and chewed it up. And then they showed you like, and I didn't realize how small it was. And then we got to see what a New York patient looks like. That was super cool to see because. Underneath, there's actually a little marker that they have up there that never goes away. So when you die, they divide it with them. They can figure out who you are based on and when you got it done. And lastly, we got to look at forearm, the muscles in your forearm to see how you can use your hands like this. So we got fully right here. It showed like, oh, it's like this in your arm as well. And then also, we had to do a research projects, a research project. And me and my partner decided to do sustainable agriculture. We picked underwater agriculture. Was finding horses in a wooden barn. And so we decided to do a basil plant and make a mini biosphere and present it to everyone. And then outside of learning, I got to meet some of the best people in the whole wide world. And I got connected to every one of them. And I'm for sure that each one will be in my life. And lastly, I would like to thank Dr. Carr and the board for sponsoring this wonderful experience and the whole program. Thank you.
I think that.
Thank you.
Great team I have. Washington School.
Comes back in session. And so we're excited to have students back in the building, attending. And looking forward to elementary and middle school, Nelson.
Washington School will be led by twenty-four senior professors. Moving the motion to approve the personnel. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve personnel support. And moving the property second, we approve personnel for all in favor. Washington School will be driven by twenty-four senior students. We approve the fees charging solicitor to twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two student. The open target, see. Schools will always set those prices. Fourth. Mentioned here, we have the question, these are the students. So. Moving the property second, all in favor. Motion care. We will be managing another contract in twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three student.
Do you want to share? Imagine Learning is our remediation program that we've been using in the district for the last three years. And the contract that we use, two different options. We have a contract option for a free year commitment, paying yearly for thirty-five thousand dollars. And this is for our reading math programs, also for vocabulary program and a math fact. Help the younger students with just adding, subtracting, multiplying, dividing. So there are four different programs within it. And then there is a second contract that you have to look at. And that would be for, who pay three years upfront, and that would be twenty-nine thousand. And to change, I don't remember the exact, not off the top of my head. But it would save us around sixteen thousand dollars if we signed the three-year commitment and paid it all upfront. This is a K five program. And their normal site license would be twenty-five thousand dollars for readings. That would be twenty-five thousand at Presswell and at Pines. And then ten thousand for the math programs on both sites. So we are getting a significant difference. No matter which contract we choose, but we are even getting a deeper discount if we use a three-year.
So if you play this as a program that we work, it usually takes two or three years.
I do think that. There has been some years in that I've been here that we have struggled with the implementation of it. This past year has been our best at implementation of it. And I do believe that was because we had instructional buddies that were kind of monitoring and helping teachers along with it. And that it was something that parents could easily support students in doing, getting on. But there have been other areas in which it hasn't been as much as it sounds. But I do think that we are trying to narrow our focus instructionally this year. And because the students are familiar with the program and the teachers are familiar with the program, we'll really be able to build up that.
And this is an adaptive program. So as a student's story title or lower. It tailors the instruction to suit what the student needs. So it's a great benefit to the teacher. Because it is customizing lessons for the teacher. It also helps us meet the measure that's required with RTSS, the multiple tier system of support. We have to have research-based programs that we are offering students. That we are doing to assist them at the level that they're at. And this meets that criteria. It's a quality research-based program.
It is one of the five programs that the state said last year could have been the program that we use for K three for their, for the RTSS.
And it is permissible to pay for it out of S R because it has to do with money.
I think that's the best. It would save us sixteen thousand dollars. And you can save sixteen thousand dollars in another way.
It is, we did a discount because we have literacy. And one of the things I like about math is, you know, when we were growing up. There would be an adult that could sit with you and do multiplication tables and practice that. Well, adults now are so busy working and caring for their family that they can't do the flashcards and spend all the time with students. It has a way of keeping children engaged because it has all the characters and all of the bells and whistles. To keep them motivated because it actually, they can earn these booster bits. And they, they are motivated to try to do many more. And you're actually learning their math facts.
And that's, there's Imagine Math, and that's the adaptive program. And there's the facts. And that can even be directly assigned to students from the teacher.
Moving the motion to approve the imaginary contract. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the imaginary contract for twenty twenty-one.
For that's the ABC Science Laboratory. They spoke with you last year. And they have asked each board to commit to be a part of the project statewide. In fact, we just had another meeting today. And we do learn valuable information from being a part of ABC Science Laboratory. One thing I did not know until today's meeting is that there's a pilot right now where they're testing vaccine on six-month to ten-month olds. I had no idea that that was even happening. But Duke is a part of being on the forefront of what is happening in our nation. And so they've asked for this commitment. And so that put it before you. Yes, ma'am. And then you'll come back again.
Moving the motion to approve the ABC Science Laboratory. So. Who would turn on two level relation departments to continue the, which we are high school.
It's the recreation department. They would like to have access to the press field. And I did say that it had to be board food. And I also said that they would have to get Washington County schools. And Washington County School Board of Ed named it in their liability insurance that they could take on all liability. And I also expressed that an adult would have to be present without children on the field at all times. I think the law and soccer.
This is something we do, you know, we have another town. You know, most of the, this is something we can ask about our county. Try to get a view. That we have a field, maybe this year, somewhere, let them see that we do the recreation, maybe whole or a county. You know, so I'm excited, but I'm saying at the same time, and I'm just going to be on going and I. We should be doing this one day in the county too, on Washington County. And now our key is, we had an option there to be a part of that recreation in that county. But they can offer.
No, what I'm saying, but, Mr. Chairman, I think we have not had, we've tried. I mean, I've noticed that, you know, they try to get folks signed up to do things for baseball, football, everything. We get a handful of kids and they end up having a couple of kids.
I have a phone, my name is like this, but you see all this ambition, this, you know. And then from Columbia, look at how they've been doing before they follow us.
They're going to land us again on that.
Chairman, one time, this is what you want to try. So the motion, I mean, a motion to approve this. Can I get a motion? I don't want to use. I make a question. And second, moving the property second, all in favor. Information on partnership agreement, which would seem to be. Oh, I don't know what you're doing.
Sorry. No worries. So Track is an after-school program that has been working in our school for the last couple of years. Not in our school, but after school. And so what has been happening, they work with some of our students during summer school as well. They work with, I mean, in conjunction with Mr. Peel and the teachers at the school. And they get referrals for students that might need extra support in academics, behavioral. And they make those recommendations. Track then gets those applications and reach out to the family. They then provide an after-school tutoring type program, allows them to open homework and behavioral. They have an entire model for kind of redirecting behaviors. And so they asked that we entered into another program again to be able to provide that with them again this year. And what we'll do is we'll work with the director and his staff to. All that referral process, making sure we're providing students. And this summer, they started about twenty-seven students. And that was off the max they could hold with COVID happening. They'd love to be able to work up to about fifty students. And that we would be able to identify any kind of data that they had that they gave to us as after. And so we would not be providing our data to them, but we would just be verifying data to support their program. I did talk with Mr. Peel beforehand in planning this and seeing it. And he did say that he supported us being able to move forward. But it was something that helps students. It's held at their center in Roper. So they would come to the school and pick up students in vans and take them. Behind our journal.
Oh.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. It's an evening program. I guess several years ago, they did something in school, but with COVID and different regulations with the grant that they have. They had to choose an in-school program or an out-of-school program. And with COVID, they chose out of school because they know we've been a visitor to it. So it's an, it's an after-school process. It is.
So this is information on the new motion.
Yeah, you have to, you have to prove to be a partner because they're applying for money on, to support our students. So you have to agree to be the partner. I'm sure that when they left, I didn't ask them, I'm sorry. But it's not during the day. It's a, it's a.
Moving the motion going to, into the partnership of the track.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, this is our program.
It's basically another M O U for early head start to serve children with special needs that need extra support. So it's something that they, they need Washington County School to approve you harder. As a word of gifts. I just didn't want to sign an agreement with another organization without.
So they don't have nobody to put this out this year now.
We have got a one room approved at Presswell. But my understanding from the organization is that they were going to prefer to move kids to Doral because they have a center there. That they will be offered a additional classroom in Presswell that has been approved.
They don't take our key to the tariff.
If, if they want to be a head start. And man, they choose not to offer one in Presswell. So they will have the option of, of offering a classic press book if they choose to go into that building. But from our preliminary conversation, they said, well, if our only choice is Presswell. If you can't accommodate us in Roper, then we'll just choose to go the extra five, six miles and take them to Doral. Yes, sir. I wanted to make sure publicly we shared that we have some. Folks with simple gifts that are offering our teachers the opportunity to do professional development grants. And some of these grants, teachers could write that included field trip opportunities for their class. But some of these grants that the teacher chose would be just for them personally and professionally. But these are extra monies that are being brought to Washington County. The representative did come and share it with the high school teachers and Ms. Peel. And I don't know if Mr. Price has had any teachers come to him yet, but Ms. Peel did indicate that she had some teachers that employed students write grants. I have personally been the recipient of a grant and had many, many teachers in the past. In Simpson County that were afforded this opportunity. And so some of it can even be in the form of a stipend to help with extra expenses. And to defray the cost for the educator. But it is people that believe in education, it's people who believe in lifelong learning and believe in supporting teachers. So we'll also share it with our elementary and our middle school teachers at their convocation. But we are just so appreciative to simple gifts for bringing that opportunity to our educators. And we will, of course, bring back to you who has been awarded these grants as they apply. There is, their first deadline is in November. And they, they do have a couple of deadlines during the year, but they're May. One is at the beginning of the year. So November the eighth. So if a teacher wanted to do something next summer, they wanted to personally go to Costa Rica to study the soils or the ways. They could apply through this grant. They wanted to go visit the Ron Clark Academy. They wanted to take children on a trip to Washington, D.C. Just, it's really only open to their imagination of what they'd like to do. And one of the things this turns and also expressed to high school teachers, which I would like to see more of our teachers do. They will also support a teacher in trying to get their national award certification. So I just think that this is a wonderful opportunity. And we really appreciate them bringing these funds to Washington.
What are you going to do?
So. I do have some money to bring to my best guess scenario. I have to call the board. Some state budget amendments, federal, state, federal, special funds, child nutrition budget amendments for fiscal year twenty-one. And the state budget amendment just helps me to reconcile the balances that we had. At June thirtieth, just to make sure that we're aligned with, with the states would have on their books at year end. So in our thirteenth month in July, we were working on trying to get that resolved. And so after we do the budget amendments and total allocation for state would be twelve million, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-five cents for fiscal year twenty-one. These are unaudit numbers. I'll have the audit numbers sometime after, in November. With it. Okay.
Twenty-one dash thirty-two.
So the federal budget amendment, twenty-one thirty-three, again, this was matching the totals that we had. And was against the actual allocations that came through. And so after the budget amendments, the total allocation for federal was ten million, five hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents for fiscal year twenty-one. For child nutrition, this budget amendment increases the child nutrition budget to match my books against the estimate. Original estimated budget. And so that brings it, the estimated budget for child nutrition to its one million, ninety-three thousand, forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. And it's still estimated because I still haven't gotten all my plane stack for fiscal year twenty-one.
I do want to say, we told the board, I mean, Mr. Ron and I, his team, we, because he has taught me. My time on the board up until this particular time, he brought the child nutrition department out of COVID. And we are seeing positive training from child nutrition departments. He is to be committed for a job. And I just want to make the wrong record. We are laying it, he ruined the right direction of child nutrition. So.
Thank you. Thank you. For the um capital outlay budget, I'm reducing the estimated budget down to match what we would have actually uh realized for fiscal year twenty one. So I'm reducing it by one mil- uh I'm sorry, hundred thirty two thousand five ninety three fifteen, which would bring our allocation to seven hundred seventeen thousand six hundred ninety, um yeah, six hundred ninety dollars and twenty eight cents, which would be our four hundred thousand that we normally get. We had some um capital um outlay carryover for fiscal year twenty and then the eighty six thousand for the boiler replacement. And then the money that they put on our books to um for fiscal year twenty one for the school bus replacement, which is about two million one thousand that I previously put on the budget. Sorry? Right, we have to put it on our books. Um we just sign up on it, but they actually pay for it and but it's on our books. So I have one more budget amendment, special funds, twenty um twenty one thirty five. Ten money sitting in the um P R C three for nurses. I'm moving that to prepay thirty eight thousand three hundred uh dollars and thirty five cents. And then um move some money from the activity bus to the um central office board of the buses. And so that was the balance of those two P R Cs, two thousand thirteen dollars and nine cents. And then um right now I just appropriated another ninety five thousand for prepay. My initial estimate for revenue before um the year started with three hundred thousand, but all last year they paid us for all four classes for all four students. So I did get more than three hundred thousand, but rather than yes, that's the number because I didn't get all the revenue and I'm just using that right now and then with the audit numbers. It'll be much less than the ninety five thousand, but I did appropriate usually about that amount in the year. It was already in the initial budget, but it would be the hundred and eighty thousand that is looking like right now. So the other thing I have as action, I'm for the board is the um fiscal year twenty one budget resolution. So uh earlier in the spring, we did have a local budget draft um that we sent forth and the local budget was approved. And um so that is exactly what we asked for again this year. And so now I have some more information where we can do a state, federal, just to do the whole full budget. Um just wanna give you a heads up.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it out. This is. Okay. Is it, is going slowly?
There it is. Okay. So um for the state, um I did get a preliminary, preliminary allotment. Um we still don't have a state funded. And so this is just our best guess of what we're gonna get. Um and so the things that I guessed on, on top of that, because I did not get an allocation for the early college, I just assumed that they're gonna give us back two seventy five, two hundred seventy five thousand that they normally do. Uh restart, they didn't tell me how much to fund that school with, so I'm estimating two million ninety five thousand to put into restart. And then I do have um accounted for the amount of money that I would need to transfer to nurse care at about four hundred and five thousand. So those are the estimates that are already built into the state budget. Um what I don't have in the state budget obviously is A, the actual numbers, and then B, what the benefits and the um retirement, health benefits and retirement costs are gonna be. So once I get those numbers, they're gonna increase that budget. Um but hopefully that revenue will increase a little bit as well. So those are the numbers that I'm anticipating for the state. What I also don't have in here is the grant for P R C twenty uh nine, which is our behavior grant and then the S R O grant, because I don't have information on those two grants just yet. So for um the state revenue to start with, I'm anticipating eleven million four hundred sixty nine thousand four hundred sixty seven dollars and two cents, and that's down about um I think it was a hundred thousand, not hundred thousand, nine hundred, not quite, it was twelve million on the other budget, so about a hundred thousand down, if I'm doing my numbers right. I'm sorry, about one million down, because if it was twelve four six nine, then I'm down to eleven six nine. But again, this is just an accident. And some of these numbers should increase, that's the hope. For local, we've already done that. Um for federal, I have mostly um carryover budgeted. I don't have my um budget full in there for Title One, and I do not have my numbers in there for um my uh student enrichment, which is P R C one oh eight and the Rule and Low Well one, one oh nine. So those numbers are missing out of this. And so when I do get those um numbers to add to the budget, the federal budget would increase. We do have in there the S R one, two, and three. S R one was just carryover. S R two is our allotment that we got in uh at the end of last year as well as S R three, along with that S R two competencies, competency based grant uh for the six thousand eight hundred seventy two dollars. Um the gears fund that we have in there is carryover for fifty four thousand for health support and then the twenty thousand for instructional support. Um that cares active uh exceptional children is carryover for ninety four eighty three. And the cares app learning management system for sixty eight oh three is carryover as well. We have um the homeless grant that's carryover at ten thousand. And that money needs to be spent by September thirtieth. So that's the only thing that I have on the books um that I know needs to be spent by September thirtieth. That's Ms. Brown's allotment. So I agree, so I'll be um talking them to them next week when we have our directors meeting to make sure that those ones are covered and um I totally agree. We're gonna do things earlier. Why, everybody in the room? Um I'm gonna have a cutoff for state funds at December thirty first to be spent on comfort so that we're not at the last minute, June thirtieth, like we were this year. So we need to spend the money this year and not wait until the last minute. So that's what I have for federal and then capital outlet. Again, we already knew that. We had um four hundred thousand allocated and the rest of that four hundred thirty seven thousand is between the boiler that we still need to pay for at the high school. I'm estimating about hundred thousand for lottery flights and we need another project this year and about two hundred fifty thousand carryover for fiscal year twenty one. So that's what the um capital outlet budget is looking like. And right now I did put the um in the um folder, I did put this link to the five year plan. Um it's um control and I worked on it together to update some of the projects and definitely focus on the air quality project. Uh sent that information to Mr. Peel and Miss Stokes to give us feedback on. And then we're also waiting on what the state is gonna say to know how we're gonna move forward with that pot of money. In the meantime, we are just taking care of little projects that are coming up here and there that are needing to be addressed.
We don't need it. So we need to make that clear tonight. There's an issue with any air quality in the next week. You know that part can be three, two weeks, two or three weeks, you can start making adjustments right then. This board need to be notified at two weeks if we got a problem. We need to know so we can make decisions, critical decisions on how to, what we need to do. We don't need air quality cannot be a issue when it comes to COVID nineteen. So I just want to make that on record. It cannot be a question about maybe personally, if we go to county and get it, get it on what we have, that's just make it happen. It's okay. We got to make sure we uh circulate after we're dealing like this. We don't want nobody to get sick.
Yes, and then um I'll just need you and Dr. Carter to sign it. And that'll be the official budget. If anything, I've come to you for going forward with the budget amendments for fiscal year twenty two. And the last thing I have is some informational items. I did put the board expense in there for July. I put the um attention spike and letter in the folder for July. And then we have the insurance documents. And then at the last minute after I sent the file, people pack it there is the property insurance. They're gonna buy me anyway, but um the Department of Insurance will be here Friday uh to walk through all the sites again. So I'm not sure if they're gonna change something after they've already done the coverage. And that's kind of where we are for our property insurance. She was already scheduled. That they gave me the binder. Um and so this is her third year in a row since I've been here for her coming and walking around. So we'll just see what she says. And so that's all I have for finance. Thank you.
Lord, I just want to commend once again uh Ms. Simpson and the instructional coach team and instructors, teachers and staff for all their hard work on the summer adventures. Um and they just um superseded my expectations with uh making school fun and um making it engaging. And we also sincerely appreciate the partnerships that we have um with four H department, Center of Energy and Boeckert Community College and the Sam Seattle Clinic, which um made some extra special um happenings for the students. And so thank you all for that hard work. We're also really super excited to be planning face to face, five days a week, fresh start, new year. And so we, to kick that off, we have a back to school bash Saturday that we hope that our families will come out to. It's um at the middle school from ten to one. And we will have our second convocation for elementary and middle school staff on the twentieth and just really excited about a brand new year. Option to explore on.
To know a grandfather who we have and send on the buffer account group, open the buffer account going and tear account getting ready to do. And so we need to start exploring options now on what we need to get. And I ain't gonna kick it back when I do. We, we got this target somewhere.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I got it. That the language has changed.
I enjoy the minimal receipt of distance between K T R students who are not fully vaccinated to then school setting to the greatest extent possible without their schooling student for full time in person learning. And they say all schools should consider uh three uh creating distance between children on school west by that was six children, one child per seat and possible, allow the three feet of physical distance between students and their parents.
When possible. And drivers have been told to do that. Um they are more cool than they were last year. But it does meet the requirements. Yes, ma'am. It, it meets the requirements of what you have. They, they are distancing as much as they can. Yes, sir. Agreed. And all the sanitation um expectations are, are still there.
I have one question. Bottom and the finance. Tell them about the East, East City program.
Oh, that I wanna do. I've got to find someone to help support it, but um I would, and Mr. McNair is all on board. I'd like to um incentivize students to exercise, basically it involves some pre tests and post tests where you have a set period of time, like four weeks, pardon? It's a childhood obesity um program. It's like a fitness Renaissance program. So um let's say a student um could only do three crunches at the beginning, but after four weeks of trying that same skill, they were able to do five or six, then they would have increased their capacity and improved their um physical fitness. So you track it over the course of a year and depending on how many they were able to increase, it's for elementary school. Um then they would either receive a certificate or a silver gold or um platinum medal. But it really works with elementary kids. And what we were discussing is the kids have been um so sedentary for so long. And um nationally, we have higher childhood obesity rates than we ever had before. So So I would really like to find some funding to help purchase those incentives for elementary students. And that's what it's about. So I'm looking for somebody to help support that.
We can be in this city a long time since we've been here. The way things go on might be back. Lord, it's nothing to claim our teaching in motion to adjourn tonight. So.